Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regular Abington School Committee here for the month of May. It's Tuesday, May 27, 2025. We're in the Abington Middle High School Library. If you could please stand as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get into the meeting, if anybody would like to address the committee on any items, if you just please come to the podium and state your name and address for the records. Okay. First item, reading and approval of records. If the committee can look over the minutes from the April 29 meeting, and I'll be looking for a motion to approve or amend the minutes as presented.
I apologize, I didn't look at this earlier, but each to Quincy College, and I'm the accountant, so if someone else correct me, D U A O E O? Should be A O. A O, right, okay. Otherwise, I'll make the motion.
So a motion with that amendment. Is there a second? I'll make this.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, perfect. Up next is award announcements, so I'm gonna pass this off to Dr. Michelle to kick us off.
Thank you. We have a number of awards and award recipients here with us tonight. It's a very exciting opportunity for us to acknowledge both student and some of our faculty and staff. So, Mr. Bourne, I believe, is gonna start with our first one.
Thank you, Dr. Michelle. Thank you, school committee. It's my honor each year to come here and present to you the recipient, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents' Award for Academic Excellence. This year's recipient from Abington High School is Senior Ben Framing. Ben, come on up. So, Ben has shown tremendous leadership throughout his time here at the school, serving as a treasurer, as an underclassman. He's also been an active member of the mathematics team, National Honor Society, and Science Club. He's excelled in a number of subjects related to STEM. Outside of academics, Ben works 20 to 30 hours per week at Linden Ponds and has done so for three years, if my research is correct. Very good. Although a reserved person, when he does speak, people listen. Ben is on his way to Virginia Tech in the fall to study aerospace engineering, so very proud of Ben. Thank you. Ben has a few quick words. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bourne. Thank you to the rest of the committee for honoring me tonight. Ever since I stepped foot into this high school, my number-one goal was to finish the top of the class, so obviously, this means a lot to me tonight. And I have to thank all my teachers that pushed me to be the best person I could be, and of course, my parents. My mom finished the top of her class, so it's an honor to fall on her footsteps. I know I made her proud, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ben. Ben, on behalf of all of us, congratulations. I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Bosta for the next set, or next one.
Yep, the next award is being presented on behalf of the Townwide PTO. It's on the slide, so I won't read all of it to you, but this award recognizes volunteer service to the school community in memory of Deirdre Zakardi, who was very active in our schools. And the award recognizes people who participate in activities that help improve the Abington Public Schools and the community, the same way that Deirdre did. So, some of the information I'm about to share, I'm reading because I wanna quote it directly. Some of it comes from the nominations that were submitted for this year's winner, or recipient, who is Carissa Morales, who is with us. Carissa Morales is an unsung hero in Abington volunteerism and the perfect recipient for this award. She donates her time to various organizations such as the AMS PTO, Townwide PTO, Music Parents, where you were just now downstairs, Aspire, along with various other charities in town. She advocates for people or groups of people who may be unable to do so for themselves. In addition, she advocates for academic rigor and equitable opportunities for all. She asks questions and holds our community accountable for decisions that impact our youth. Although she isn't posting on Facebook or acting as an "Abington" cheerleader, she is spending hundreds of hours enhancing our students' experiences in and out of school. She puts others before herself, is always there to volunteer where it is needed, and is just an incredible person, mother, and friend. She is exactly what this award is for, and reminds us all how Deirdre approached everything she did. On behalf of the Townwide PTO, we would like to thank Carissa for everything she does for our community by honoring her with the 2025 Deirdre Service Award.
Carissa, congratulations. Dr. Robbins, you are up next.
Thanks, all. So I'm here to present the Excellence in Special Education Award on behalf of our district CPAC. The Excellence in Special Education Award is intended to honor special educators whose work has had an exceptionally positive impact on students with disabilities and their families. Nominations for the award are made by families and community members, and the CPAC Board determines the winner based on the contents of the nomination. The Excellence in Special Education Award recognizes one certified staff member and one support staff member on an annual basis. So first, our support staff recipient is Judy Buckley. And just a few quick notes for the audience on Judy. So Judy has served in the Special Education Department at Abington High School for 24 years. Judy has served students with both severe needs and moderate needs. She currently focuses on serving students with moderate needs in inclusion settings, and she also provides guidance to new members of staff in terms of making all classrooms inclusive. And just to very quickly review the nomination statement that got Judy the award, so Ms. Buckley has been an employee of APS for over 25 years. She's a tutor at the high school, where she is known as a friendly and caring advocate for her students. Special ed students, especially at the high school level, don't like to be singled out or appear different to their peers. Judy does a beautiful job of balancing the needs of the students without making them feel different. She is in there to support a handful of specific students, while all the students benefit from her presence in the classroom. Congratulations, Judy.
Congratulations, Ms. Buckley.
And then we have one additional award, and this is for... And so we have one additional recipient to honor, and this is our professional staff recipient. So the winner this year is Caitlin Hawkes. And I have a few members for the audience about Caitlin. So Caitlin has served as a moderate needs special education teacher in our district. She's completing her fifth school year. Caitlin serves students with moderate needs and low incidence disabilities. Caitlin provides effective services both in and outside of the classroom. And Caitlin received multiple nominations for this award, and I'll just quickly go through two of them. So Caitlin's compassion for her job and willingness to go above and beyond for her students is truly what makes her an excellent special educator. This year, Caitlin advocated for additional resources and consult time to strategize ways for the ELA and math curriculum could be accessible for my son. She's always thinking of creative ways to help my son achieve his goals and goes out of her way to make materials or try different techniques so he's successful. I still can't believe all the success he's had with ELA this year, reading his sight words and sounding out letter sounds. He's achieving so much because of her instruction. Caitlin is always smiling, and her positivity is infectious. It's a great feeling knowing my son has Caitlin in his corner, teaching him and cheering him on each day at school. And then just quickly, the second. Ms. Hawkes has gone above and beyond to support not only my daughter's educational needs, but also her emotional well-being. She brings patience, empathy, and creativity to every interaction, making my daughter feel seen, understood, and capable, even on her hardest days. Her dedication has made a lasting impact on our family, and we are so grateful to work with her. Congratulations, Caitlin.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins. Ms. Buckley and Ms. Hawkes, thank you for all that you do. Congratulations. Dr. Bosta, go for it.
All right. With over 77 nominations coming from students, staff, and families in multiple languages, this year's Chet Mallett Awards are truly representative of Abington's best. I would like to thank all the staff, students, and families who've made nominations this year. I would also like to thank the members of the committee who volunteered their time to review each nomination in order to select this year's recipients. As was announced during Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, I'm excited to share again that this year's recipients of the Chester J. Mallett Outstanding Certified and Support Staff Awards are Joan Smith, Abington Middle School Nurse, and Lauren Dooley, Beaverbrook Elementary School Paraprofessional. Like Dr. Robbins did, I will share a little bit about each recipient from the nominations that they received. Lauren is completing her third year as a paraprofessional in Abington. Here are some highlights from her nominations. Lauren Dooley goes above and beyond in the classroom to ensure that all students are supported and on task. She has a way of being nurturing and kind, but also pushing students to meet her expectations. Lauren often has ideas to try to help our students get on track. She texts ideas during her off-hours to show she is thinking about our students while even off-duty. Lauren comes in early and stays late on a regular basis. She has a great deal of patience and kindness, and we are so lucky to have her as part of our team. Joan Smith is completing her 27th year as a nurse in Abington, and she will be retiring in the fall. Here are some highlights from Joan's many nominations. The responsibilities accepted and deeds performed by Joan Smith are simply put, too numerous to capture in a short form or a few paragraphs. However, I will try to somehow do it justice. Joan is the most selfless and generous person I believe I have ever worked with. Joan is completely and wholeheartedly dedicated to her students. She is warm and compassionate and goes well above what would be normally expected in her role as the (parentheses) beloved school nurse at Abington Middle School. Joan cares deeply about the children and families she serves, and she gives each and every one 110% of her time and attention, whether she is treating the smallest of paper cuts or the most serious of chronic ailments. She is, by every measure, someone who truly makes an impact and a difference in the lives of our students at AMS.
Ms. Dooley and Mrs. Smith, congratulations on your awards. Everybody, all the nominees, congratulations to everybody. Thank you for all that you do for our children in this town. It's greatly appreciated. I guess that's kinda the...I tried to wrap it up, but I think that's the best way to put it for everybody. Thank you.
Yep. I just wanna take a moment to again congratulate all of our award winners. You know, you were selected out of many, many nominations, and you are part of an elite group, and congratulations. I would also acknowledge that I was lucky enough to work with Joan when I was the principal at the Folio, and Joan, 27 years in Abington, retiring this fall, you will be greatly missed and very well-deserving. So, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to the business at hand, I guess, so feel free, feel free.
Yeah, thank you all.
So up, Chrissy, you want me to take you? So up first is the report of the Assistant Superintendent. We're gonna go with the English Learner Education Department update. Ms. DePree? DePree? DePree, I thought I had it right the first time.
Can you just wait one second? We'll kinda let...
Go ahead.
So I'm Elizabeth DePree, and I'm the English Learner Education Director for pre-K through 12, and I will give you the annual update on the ELA department. So first, taking a look at our numbers. So, we are continuing the trend of growing. Our English learner population grew by about 4% from last year. We currently have 270 Ls and 75 former English learners. So combined, Ls and Fals, they make up about 16% of the total student population. Do you want me to pause?
Karen, can you close the door down on the other end?
Okay.
Thank you.
So Ls and Fals make up about 16% of the total student population in Abington. And taking a look at the languages, so compared to last year, the students who speak Portuguese, our English learners who speak Portuguese, the numbers fell slightly, but it's still by far our largest language group. And we've had a growth of students who speak Haitian Creole, coming from Haiti, and students from various countries who speak Arabic. And combined, we have students from 16 different language backgrounds. So last year, I presented on areas of growth. So just a reminder on those areas. We talked about continuing to write ELA curriculum that's better aligned with general education curriculum for grades K through 12. That's something that our EL teachers have been working hard to do, making sure that what they're teaching in their groups is aligned with the standards that students are learning in their gen. ed. classes. Over the summer last year, some of our teachers wrote curriculum for REACH, which is a curriculum resource we use at the elementary school level. Teachers are gonna continue their curriculum writing this summer. Our second area of growth that we talked about was providing staff with more guidance on referring English learners to special education. So this is something that I've been working closely with James Robbins with, and we've had great success. More Ls are being referred at the elementary school level to SST and IST. In addition, more Ls are receiving Title I and reading services at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale School. Finally, our next goal was looking at more equity for grading for English learners in general education classes. So one thing that we've done is we've moved away from the pass/fail option for newcomers at the high school. And in addition, the high school staff during faculty meetings have been working to devise more equitable grading practices for all students, which definitely benefit English learners. So moving on to our goals for this year, every year, we have an ELA Program Review Committee that looks at the ELA department and identifies areas of strength and areas of growth. And the committee comprised of teachers from kindergarten all the way through high school and admin across the district work together to create these goals. So the two goals that we came up with this year, we have one that focuses on social, emotional support for our English learners. So some ideas that we have for next year that we will try to do is establish a resource document for basic services for L families. A lot of our families come with a lot of needs and don't really know where to go for certain services, so providing a resource document when students enroll and families enroll. Establishing intervention groups in schools, this is something that we've had success in the past with, and we hope to do more of. Just have groups for students who are new to the country and, you know, maybe working with a social work intern to talk about tips for mental health and adjusting to new school. Another idea that we have is we have LPAC meetings every month or so. So at one of our LPAC meetings next year, having a presentation that's focused on mental health resources for families. And finally, we would like to continue opportunities across the district for cultural celebration and awareness. Our second goal is centered on guidance for the referral process for English learners. So like I said, we've had a lot of success at referring Ls to SST and IST in larger numbers, but the pendulum can easily swing from underreferring to overreferring Ls. So one thing we talked about was creating a reference document for staff related to the referral process. James and I discussed potentially presenting at faculty meetings on the topic of when to refer English learners to IST SST. And finally, we'd like to develop a guidance document for our district's IST and SST teams that focuses on consideration for English learners during the intervention process. So I was asked to talk about how the ELA department is working with the strategic plan in Abington. So I focused on teaching, learning, communication, and culture and inclusion. So for teaching and learning, like I said, I would like our curriculum to be aligned both vertically and horizontally, making sure that our Ls are learning language and skills that will help them to succeed in access curriculum in the classroom. For communication, in the past, we've used talking points to communicate with families as a two-way communication platform. As a district, we're moving to Thrill Share. And next year, one of our goals is to make sure that our L families are able to access Thrill Share and continue to communicate with their teachers and with the schools in general. And then finally, looking at culture inclusion. So some things that we would really like to continue doing is a push for parent outreach. So continuing our Abington LPAC, adult ESL classes, which have been funded by the Abington Cultural Council, and then other events to bring families in, such as the ESL Family Night. So I wanna thank you for the opportunity for letting me share the department updates. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll start.
Yep.
Once a student places out of the English Language Program, the EL program, what kinds of supports are in place for them once they no longer need the academic?
So when students exit, in order to qualify to exit, they have to have, reach a qualifying score on WIDA Access. And once they reach that score, they're reclassified to a former English learner. Former English learners still need to be placed in SEI classes, even though that they've reached the level where they no longer need, you know, pull-out or push-in ELA services. Oftentimes, they still need lots of language support because, you know, language is very fluid, and just because they score on the test doesn't mean that they still don't need support. So English learners do still stay in SEI classes. And then, if needed, we do monitor our Fals closely throughout the year. If a student, let's say, is struggling due to language, former English learners can receive ESL services if the parent agrees. And then, in very rare cases, former English learners could be reclassified back as an English learner if, you know, the team decides that they're not ready to move out of ESL services. Does that answer your question?
It does. I have more.
Okay.
Regarding the placing out of ELs, are most of them, I don't know if you have the breakdown, but are most of them able to be in mainstream English classes before they graduate?
Yes. So, you know, our English learners who are reclassified to former English learners do typically very well once they're reclassified, and actually, they score higher than general ed. students on the English MCAS typically. So there's great success for students who are reclassified.
And also, the Family Night is, that's next week, right?
It is. It's on June 5. Yes. Excuse the typo that got sent out on the flyer, but yes, it's next week.
I have a couple of my good. Do you see any trends in when the transition to a newcomer, be it first or second year in the country, when it's most difficult for those students, or is it very individualized?
So just so I clarify the question, are you saying is it most difficult for students during the first two years?
No. So if you're the, if it's your first year in the country, do you see that the elementary school students have an easier transition or harder, middle, high school? Like where? Where's the most support needed?
So I think it varies. Students come with different needs. So I think in the most ideal circumstance, a student will come to the country with a literacy background. So if they're literate in their native language, it's a matter of transferring those academic skills to English. So we have, you know, students, let's say, at Woodsdale who are in third and fourth grade who come, and they're able to read and write in their native language. They've developed, you know, strong math skills, and it's a matter of them learning the language and transferring what, those literacy skills to English. That is, you know, I think that age level, too, just like the Woodsdale age level, is great because students tend to be a little bit less self-conscious than maybe middle school, high school. But there's also huge needs in every level. So we have, going back to Woodsdale, students who come who are not literate in their native language and maybe are in, like, having their first school experience in third grade. So for those students, they need lots of ketchup and lots of support. So every grade level has needs, advantages, disadvantages.
Okay, all right, great. And then, LPAC attendance, do you have good attendance from the community in the LPAC, or are the numbers low in your meetings?
So in previous years, we had great attendance. This year, we've seen a major drop in attendance. So for example, our last LPAC meeting, we only had three parents attend. We've had, you know, previous years where we had 30 parents in attendance, but this year, our numbers have significantly decreased.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next?
Yes.
Thank you. You guys have a ton of work, and you do some, you do amazing things. Are there opportunities during the summer for our students or for families to continue, or are we no longer able to?
So in past years, so going way back, we used to use Title III for summer programming and tutoring. We've moved away from that, and we were using ESAR funds for summer programming. But unfortunately, last year, was the first year in a while, we didn't offer anything. And something I'd like to really try to bring back, because I do see a very big difference of students who attend summer programming. They are more likely to come back to school with less language loss and be more ready academically.
Plant that money tree, people.
Quick question for you. Regarding the adult class, is that well-attended, or, and are you finding that the parents that attend those classes, it helps the students more?
Yes. So we had two sessions. We had a fall session and a spring session, and we had about 30 parents sign up for adult ESL. We ran two classes. I taught one of them, and I'd say I consistently had 15 students per class. Towards the end of the semester, parents started to drop off slightly, but I had about 15 or so. And for me, like, it's a really great way to get to know parents, and I know other teachers have said the same thing, where you just make those connections. Parents have the opportunity to ask questions in a, like, way that's less intimidating than, you know, maybe messaging the school or coming to the school. So, and I know that, like, from the adult ESL class, I've been able to recruit parents to the LPAC. So it's a really great opportunity for parents to get to know the school in a less intimidating way.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Pre, only one, so Melanie kind of hit on what I was gonna...
Mr. Prell, I want, so Melanie kind of hit on what I was gonna ask, was about the parent involvement, because obviously, in different areas, you see different levels of parent involvement. And you said how it's dropped off tremendously this year. Is there anything you can attribute it to? Like, is it the same parents, they've already kind of heard the message, and so they're not coming back? Is it just the newer parents aren't as, I mean, everybody's got stuff, right? So I didn't know if there was anything you may be able to attribute it to, the drop-off?
So I think there's definitely various reasons. I think there can be a little bit of a fear of coming into schools, and I think I would attribute it mainly to that.
Okay. I get that for sure. Especially when it's an unfamiliar environment, things like that, so.
Right.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time tonight to teach us about everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Ms. Daisy, the Wellness Department.
Karen, Karen, I'm gonna have you stay there for your other thing, too, so if you want to grab stuff, you can.
I was just gonna say, good morning. Hi, I'm Karen Daisy. I am the Director of Wellness from K to 12. So the progress on the areas that we had presented in 2023 and 2024, we said that it would be nice if we could increase instructional time grades K to four. There is no law that says you have to have certain amount, DESI guidelines recommend 150 minutes a week. We're not anywhere near there. As we said last time, it's still staffing, like, it's base, we just don't have it. So we have not made any progress in that goal. We said that we wanted to align our curriculum, and we are still working on that. We, trying to see if I have that on this slide, we kind of were hoping our curriculum, because as you are aware, the state came out with new frameworks in 2023. And we've been like, okay, great. So this has been our, we're still on our old curriculum, but we're changing the way we teach in that the state is saying things should be based on a skill, not a topic. Like, instead of saying, welcome to school, we're gonna learn about nutrition for three weeks, now we're gonna learn about substance abuse for two weeks, now we're gonna, instead, it's like, we're gonna learn about decision-making and goal-setting and how to use valid and reliable sources and all that kind of stuff. So we've just kind of been, each, all three of us, between Mr. Cormos, Mr. Hemmixon, and myself, we're still teaching the same content, we're just kind of flipping the order in which it's going. And then we got together on Friday and took the DESI guidelines, and I gave everybody a highlighter, and I'm like, tell me what of these you've done. And it was amazing, without like purposely planning it, that we were pretty aligned. And there were some things where I'm like, no, I did not, like, it's just not a subject we've covered. And all of a sudden, like, we don't cover CPR in freshman health. We have a CPR class, so that was something we were all like, no, we don't do that. In an ideal world, freshman health would be a whole year, but then I have a friend who teaches at Botack, and she told me she gets four weeks of health in high school to teach all of the frameworks. So we are far better off than many places. So I was kind of hoping we'd be done. The freshman health one is done. We are ready to implement that in the fall. Yes, I will get it to you. And I, the elementary teachers, it kind of, I guess, I wasn't really thinking on the fact that, like, Rebecca Polkan and Jackie Gurry are writing their own multiple grades by themselves, and we have three teachers working on one grade. So we finished, but the elementary is gonna need a little bit more time to work on this. We have not made any progress in enrolling for sophomore health, and that was totally on us. Not that it would have, I don't know if it would have worked or not, but we mentioned last year that, we used to have a thing where the director would go around to homerooms in the morning and be like, this is all the electives you can take in our department. And somehow that went away. I don't know if COVID went away and it never came back, or I don't know why we don't have it. And then we said, we need, need, need to promote this in our class. But I think that, like, I don't teach health in the fall, and Mr. Cormos is new, and he's never had to promote this. So I, I just don't think a lot of kids know that we have a sophomore health class. So, and to be fair, if it did get offered, something else would have had to be cut, because we have exactly the right amount of teachers to teach the number of sections that we got from guidance. And, oh, that's where I put that, in the last one. We are hoping to be done by the end of the school year. I would like to revise that and say, high school is, will be done by the end of the school year. The rest of them will be, continue a work in progress, all those PD days that are department-based. Areas for growth, again, I'm just gonna always leave it in there, it would be nice, but I think I heard you, Heidi, say that we needed to plant the money tree. So yeah, if you can plant an extra one and, you know, build more room. We need to continue our vertical and horizontal alignment of the curriculum. We would like to increase our enrollment in sophomore health classes. Again, we are going to be determined to come around in January and talk to those kids before they, and our next thing, now that we have the new curriculum written, we want to focus on creating more assessments that are skills-based instead of just topic-based, so that it aligns better with the frameworks. As far as the Abington Public Schools strategic plan, we are working on our vertical and horizontal alignment of the curriculum. The entire high school wellness department made our professional goal about ways to improve learning for EL students. So upon, like, you know, everybody finishing their, submitting their evidence that everybody made that, we made it a point to hang vocabulary in both the gym and the classrooms that have language in, or have vocabulary words in different language. Pre-teaching, it is huge, because I think we still just forget that certain words are just, oh, that's not a common phrase in your language, and we're doing a much better job. We did some pre- and post-tests, and everybody was able to score what the teacher had hoped for. And we also held a pretty successful, if I do say so myself, school-wide health fair in March. So we took the half-day of school, and instead of having classes, kids came to school and picked, they pre-picked during a mentor group what session they wanted to go to, and they had dozens and dozens of choices that they could go to, and anything ranging from mental health to physical health. Some were interactive, some were more sit-down and have a person, you know, teach you about a certain subject. But I'd say overall, would you agree, Mr. Prell, the feedback was pretty good, that they liked that? Of course, they're like, can we do it again next half-day? We did talk at our Wellness Committee meeting about bringing it back again. To be determined if it's yearly or every other year, but I think, I think it was very, ooh, I didn't mean to hit that, but I am done, so. Questions?
Questions? Yeah, go ahead. Oh, no, I was more looking around, but I will say, I, I will say that-
I don't know what's happening, it's just going.
The, woo. I'm gonna go out and say the health fair was more than marginally successful. When you have high school students say, that was way better than I thought it would be, when they're standing in the school saying, I can't wait to do this again next year, that was time well spent. I know you did a ton of work on it. I think a lot was learned, and I, I would love to see something like that yearly. I know it's a-
Yes, we just need a, it would, I don't know what we need, a bigger team that can be accessible at this building all the time.
Yes.
But yeah, but also, I agree with what you said at the meeting, now that we've done it, we have a whole lot more resources, like, we know who can do this and who can do that, and who we would invite back, and who was like, hmm, maybe skip that one. Overall, yeah, I think it wouldn't be as difficult to do it again.
Thank you.
Ms. Daisy, I have a, I think I have more comments and one question maybe.
Okay.
So just for clarification, I know that in high school, the requirement for health is one semester freshman year, is that what we currently, just for those that aren't aware of it? And I want to commend on the, because I don't think about it, but as you said it, the, working with the EL students in terms of, you think, well, maths, math is kind of math, right? But then, as you get to things, there could be so many topics or phrases that are viewed differently in other areas of the world, and like, the lang, the language barrier could definitely be something huge there, so I just want to commend you on that, work with the EL students. And the only other thing I, it was more of a clarifying thing, Heidi kind of took some of it, but the school-wide health fair was school-wide, high school, school-wide, correct? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That was all I had.
There were some other teachers that were like, ooh, we should do this school-wide for science, or we should do this, but that will be a decision.
Do you guys have any questions for Ms. Daisy?
I do just have one question. You have a lot of junior, senior classes that run in the Health Department that are quite popular. Am I, is that still an accurate statement?
Yes. I would say Mind, Body, Spirit is the most popular of them.
That's the one that I wrote down, that I knew that that one was popular, but I think there are quite a few of them. And I know we hear a lot about AP classes and junior, seniors struggling to fit things into the schedule. So is there a reason that those classes are geared toward junior, senior instead of, say, sophomore, so that we can get students access to health and wellness earlier and have fewer conflicts with something like AP that's only offered when they hit junior, senior level?
I think, at one point, somebody had asked me prior to your administration, I don't remember if it was an assistant principal or a principal that said, what are your thoughts on opening those junior, senior electives to sophomores? That I wasn't a huge fan of. I just, this is the time of year, seniors have left, and now my juniors are doing the whole like, oh, now we can talk, now we can. And I just would fear, especially in a health class, because in addition to the language and different vocabulary, you need people to talk. It's a pretty conversational-based class, and I would be worried that sophomores might-
Hold back if it's a senior.
Hold back. Great, great. That being said, that doesn't mean that we couldn't offer, I mean, something to the sophomores. Life 101 is specifically for seniors. Like, it is literally what comes next after you graduate.
Yep.
And despite all of Ben's accolades, he did manage to get into Life 101, so. Oh, actually, no, he's in Mind, Body, Spirit. So yeah, it can be done, but you're right. I do, I, it goes both ways. Sometimes the kids, and I get kids who are in two or three AP classes, and their reason for taking it is, I need a break in my day. That's probably why Charlie took it. And so it, it can be, a lot of kids, they are finding a way to take that class. And others are looking for the, like, I need a class to pass to get out. So we, we get a, we get a mix, but I do, it is definitely like, yeah, it's popular. And I mean, I will say that if we are able to fit, what do we have, three sessions with a 24, 24, and then I think one maybe had 16, so we're still reaching, like, a decent amount.
Yeah.
Again, grow another money tree, hire a few more teachers, and we could teach it to, all will be great.
Okay.
But no, that's not a terrible idea. Like, we could definitely look into that.
I just feel like you have, you're fortunate in that your department is a popular one where there's a lot of topics kids are interested in. So maybe they wouldn't be interested in sophomore health and feel like they're gonna go through another anatomy class or something, but if they get to do some of the more creative wellness, mind, body-
Or we just sort of change the name of it.
Exactly.
To something that is, but yeah, I don't even think they know it exists, because, you know, they pretty much go into guidance and say, this is what I want to take after looking at the program of studies, and I think it's one of those, like, I didn't even know it was a thing.
Yep.
So, but yeah, I mean, we didn't have, for the longest time, we didn't have a freshman class. That was the only year missing. And then everybody said, you gotta move this class down to freshmen, they need it desperately when they get to high school. And they were right, and they do. So yeah, there's nothing that says we can't shift things around.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Daisy, for this topic.
Director hat, ah, global travel.
So, um, so I'm gonna have Ms., conversations about the trip just move up here while Ms. Daisy's up there. Ms. Daisy, just to give you some background, so the committee received the Southern California information a couple weeks ago. I know you have some other stuff that's newer to us, so I know what the end game is, what we're looking for, but we're gonna see how that goes, and I'm gonna, if the committee's comfortable enough voting on these two tonight, we'll do it, but I can't promise you that right now.
Okay. So if I can just back up a little bit, in the years past, we had a trip that was supposed to go to Sweden and maybe one other Scandinavian country. It got very minimal interest, kids thought it was boring, they decided to pivot, go to Greece. I know I didn't return to school committee for that. I don't know if it was something that Peter Schaefer at the time was like, hey, what do you guys think about like this itinerary? Or maybe-
Yeah, that, that's fine, so we can just talk about what we're, just talk about what we're gonna talk about, and we'll go from there.
So what I would love to do, and I talked to Dr. Michelle about this, is, and she said this has to be next year, separate thing, is open up, I didn't realize we had an in-writing policy that only juniors and seniors can leave the country. I guess when this program started, we thought it'd be a good idea if you're 16, I don't know where that number came from, I was not the director of this program until two years into it. So I think that adding sophomores could increase our numbers. So neither trip, one trip got seven, one trip got six. Neither one of them can run on those numbers. So, yes.
Which trips?
Galapagos and Ireland-Scanlan. Both got, Ireland-Scanlan got seven, Galapagos got six. They cannot run on those. So they, it was Aaron Slaton who came and said, hey, I think maybe I'm gonna pivot and pitch a trip to California, because then we couldn't invite sophomores, because after talking to Dr. Michelle, she was like, you can't leave the country with them, but, like, we took them to Puerto Rico this year, we took them to Grand Canyon, so they can travel within the United States. And so that was gonna be the thing. That's why I gave you that itinerary, I said, this is what we're gonna pivot to, we need to get more kids on board. So Aaron Slaton held a meeting on Friday, and of course, this is all like Friday, right, for a long weekend, and I'm sorry for the 9,000 emails. And the kids were like, the junior, seniors who signed up for either one of those trips, she didn't ask them, she pulled them and said, you're coming to my bridge block, we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna talk about this. And when she said California, they were like, oh, I, I signed up for this because I want to leave the country, I don't want to go to California. So then she's like, can we pivot and get both of them to agree on one destination, because 13 of them together could be enough? Probably not with grand classroom, but with EF, if you have, or ACIS, where you have the option to travel with another school and just share the bus and therefore the expense. So she said it was, after talking about multiple possible different destinations, Belize was one that they settled on, and they also tossed around Spain and Portugal. Spain and Portugal had been approved for 2022, but it didn't happen because of COVID, and you probably know they went to Belize a couple years ago.
Yep.
After that meeting happened, and we were like, I emailed and I said, take Spain and Portugal off, it's gonna be either California, or it's gonna be Belize. Then a student emailed and said, I think that that meeting was a little chaotic, it was rushed, I don't feel like everybody felt like they could say what they really wanted to do, and there was several of us that don't want to go to Belize, and we still want to go to Europe, and I don't see why we have to take Spain and Portugal off. So I guess what I'm here to ask is, if we just got approval for, yeah, you could do, we won't, we will be doing one trip.
Okay.
It's not gonna be all three trips, that we can't get the numbers for one, there's no way we're gonna get the numbers for three.
Okay.
I think in Aaron's dream world, she would offer Belize and then say, all right, you know, because that's gonna require her to have 20 kids, and, at least with grand classroom. So I don't know if she'll get that, and in which case, we would open it to sophomores and do this California itinerary.
Okay.
We have 12 days of school left. Whether or not all of that can be done, I feel like it's gonna have to be-
So if I can just, so the idea is, there's three different trips before us to-
There's three possibilities that we could choose from.
Three locations, I guess, and there'll be one trip in the end, is that kinda what it is?
One trip in the end, yes.
And as of right now, sophomores could attend Southern California, only juniors and seniors could attend the other two.
Yes. So we'll deal with that.
Do you know when it'll be, February or April?
The cheapest one, which apparently seems to be February for all of them.
Looks that way, yeah. Yep, okay. I'm gonna leave it open to any questions on any of them. We're gonna vote all three locations separately. If we vote on the, if you guys are comfortable voting on the other two, we're gonna vote on all three of them separately, just in case, so there's no confusion on us or anything, but feel free to ask-
Southern California, I am noticing, has a price of $39.98 on only less April vacation, if that happens to be cheaper for February. But I have to imagine, Aaron's very, like, she wants to make it the most inclusive she possibly can, and I don't think she would have picked the higher price. Like, she really wanted to go to Ireland in April and picked February because it was cheaper, so.
Okay.
I unfortunately don't have a February price for that, but-
That's all right, that's okay. Feel free, the committee, to ask any questions of Ms. Daisy, then we can talk about next steps.
The Southern California trip. The itinerary that you shared with us, was that just a demo, or is that absolutely the itinerary?
No, and nothing is ever absolutely the itinerary, even when, I mean, Charlie can tell you, we came back and we didn't get to do a couple of the things that were on our itinerary for Costa Rica. Things happen, things get canceled, businesses close down between now and the time you go. But in general, I know that there was a question of, like, what's the educational value for going to Southern California? And I reached out to the grand classroom rep, and I'll tell you what he said in my, like, size-four font that I printed this out on. like size four font that I printed this out on. He said that we will have the group in LA and do the film production and media. I think what his angle is, is that, yeah, this is like artsy, but then again, we have a music and art trip every year that does that angle of it. And, um, and the film industry is the focus of that. Uh, he did say that the Hollywood Wax Museum was specifically requested, I'm guessing by Erin Slaton, um, but he said that could be replaced with a more educational experience if that is something that people would desire. Um, Palm Springs visit features the Joshua Tree National Park and the group will not only explore this park in protected space, but will be learning about conservation and environmental stewardship practices and the relationship between the federal government and the natural world. The Coachella Valley and Salt and Sea area feature working artists and galleries, some very unique settings that we could integrate a photography workshop or the like. Students will be sea kayaking the La Jolla Caves and learning about marine environment and meet a biologist who works at the San Diego Zoo. This is an active trip designed to be purposeful and educational with some fun tied in, was his response.
Cool.
They're not just going to the beach and looking for famous people on the street.
Um, and then, so did, was there any feedback as to why maybe people weren't jumping at Galapagos and England and Ireland?
Um.
Or is that where it was?
No, I really don't know why. I, what I keep hearing, and we have now used three different tour groups, EF tours, ACIS, and grand classroom, and they are all telling me that across the board, this is not an Abington thing. Like right after COVID, we had 36 kids on one trip and we were like, yes, we're back. And they have been like, and what I don't want to do is, you know, I would not even recommend Erin run a trip to Belize if she got exactly 20, because that would be the number she needed. Kids inevitably drop out, somebody changes their mind, and then you're begging and you're just like, please Heidi, come, come on this trip with us. And I don't want to do that. Like we had to do that for Charlie's trip.
Yeah.
We begged Damian to come and he did, and it worked out wonderfully. But I don't want to be in that position as two straws fell trying to get, so we want to go on a trip that has beyond the number of minimum needed. The thing about California is that it has to be grand classroom because neither EF nor ACIS do, um, in the United States trips. They only travel internationally.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'm curious, um, if we go with the cheaper option, which I think is great because I think cost is probably a roadblock for a lot of people, um, especially increasingly. Um, I'm curious if the students who said yes to the previous trips, if the February or April would be a hard no, considering winter sports, I think playoffs is February break that people have to decide between, whereas April is not a playoff season. I don't know if that plays into.
So what I can tell you is that the six, I'm trying to think here. I would have thought that all the people that applied to the Galapagos would have been like, oh yeah, I want to definitely go to Belize because same, same. And it was not like, I think there are three people that applied to go to Ireland that do not want to go to the Galapagos and has, not one of them is an athlete and it has nothing to do with sport seasons. I don't know if the Galapagos, which was going to happen in April, now that it's Belize in February, I don't know. I've heard rumors that some of the kids already heard the trip was going to be canceled and they've already started booking their own trips to go visit colleges and to go do their own thing. I, I don't have a good answer for why this is. We hang posters, there's still posters hanging, you're probably like, oh my gosh, when is she going to take these down? There's posters. We hold bridge block meetings. We poll kids that we think, we're like, hey, you should want, come learn about this trip. Um, I, as I said at the last meeting, I just think we have a huge number of seniors who now want to go to Aruba and they don't want to do both trips. So that's why I would love to move forward with allowing sophomores to leave the country and travel internationally. I think we could get a good.
That's not for tonight, though.
But that's not for tonight because that has apparently a subcommittee involved.
Correct.
That I don't know anything about, so.
Um, does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Daisy? Are you comfortable voting on all the opportunity for them, for these to be on the agenda for them going forward next year for all?
I'm, I'm cool with voting to float trips.
All right. So first off, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the field, the trip to Southern California, um, as presented by Ms. Daisy and in the flyer.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we add to that motion, either February or April vacation?
Yes.
This says April, just to make sure we have it as an.
Is everybody good with that option?
Yes.
All right. Um, so we're going to, I'm going to take Portugal and Spain next because it was closest to me. Um, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve the potential trip to Portugal and Spain as presented by Ms. Daisy. It's February or April on the flyer there, so I think we're good.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, um, same deal for Belize. I'll be looking for a motion to approve the trip to Belize, um, as presented by Ms. Daisy.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Daisy.
Hopefully one of these will run.
Sorry, may I ask, uh, one of the things that you said was you anticipate only one of the trips going.
I'm sorry, what did I?
You anticipate only one of these three trips being filled.
Oh, I anticipate, yes.
But if there were enough interest in two, we would do two. I just want to make sure.
So what I have learned is like, I believe that Christina Wilson is just tabling the Galapagos for the following year when we could invite sophomores hopefully. And so I don't know that she's, I mean, heck, if I get a lot of huge interest, I'll take the kids to Spain and Portugal.
And then my second request is, once a trip is solidified, can you please let me know so I can let the committee officially know which trip.
Yes.
Will be going.
Fingers crossed, that will be in the next 10 schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daisy.
Thank you for letting me down.
No problem. Yep, no problem. Mr. Born will take it on you tomorrow. Yep, you're up, Mr. Born. Uh, Abington High School Improvement Plan, Jonathan Born, principal.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I believe you have a copy of my proposed school improvement plan for the 2025, 2026 school year. Um, I think at the end, I'll, uh, obviously be comfortable taking questions. So what I'd like to do, um, I know folks get a chance to look at student achievements. Um, if you have any particular questions about those, we can do those at the end. Um, if that's favorable. What I'd like to open is, is a recap of the goals from this current school year that informed our next steps going forward. Um, as you may have heard from some of my colleagues in the English Language and Wellness Department, um, we did spend a better part of this year doing a deep dive into grades and grading practices here at the high school. Um, we have made, um, I think exceptional headwinds in this process, which was, um, a very interesting academic, um, adventure for us at the school. Lots of different strategies and techniques that we have implemented, some other that are much more adaptive and take a lot more thinking. Um, one of the things that came out of that, that was very successful, we feel, or we're hoping, that this group's already seen is our updated academic integrity language that was in the handbook. Uh, hopefully by this Thursday or by the close of this school year to open next fall, we all, we will have also established school-wide common language and expectations about late work, retakes and extensions. Mostly the rationale being that each teacher has a very valid why for their rules for those things, but it's awfully challenging for kids to keep track of six to seven different teachers' whys, limits, points on, off, et cetera. Um, so we are trying to make that as common, school-wide as possible. Um, so that is still something we're hoping to do. Um, the second goal was after many iterations, lots of math, lots of almost eureka moments, lots of crumpled papers, um, getting 99 points percent of the way there and someone saying, well, what about this one thing? Um, we've done a ton of analysis on our schedule, our rotating schedule, the waterfall schedule and how we use bridge blocks. Um, and to be frank, we can't quite come to something that is like movable, that is actionable forward, that is either palatable to the community, for students, to the teaching staff. Um, and mostly that's due to constraints. It's not necessarily a lack of appetite or interest, um, but we do have unique scheduling constraints between shared staff and space in the middle school, buses, lunch, that just prove, frankly, vexing for yours truly, um, that you get so close but not quite there. Um, potentially, interestingly enough, this could be an area where AI could help. If I say, AI, here's my constraints, go to work, what can you build for me? So that's, we'll see what I could do this summer. I'll be talking to Mr. McCurtin about that. Um, any questions about, uh, the status of our goals from this current school year? All right. I'd like to move on then to my proposed goals for the future school year. The first strategic goal is to identify and implement opportunities to employ standards-based grading in grade reporting with select departments and staff members. I'll talk more in detail about that in a moment. Um, the second goal, which I think is, um, for me, pretty thematic from my many meetings, being part of the school committee and conversations we've had, not just here, uh, but elsewhere in school council and other parents and staff, is to define and explore the concept of rigor, relevance and depth of knowledge related to our curriculum instruction and assessment within the Abington High School committee, community. So speaking towards improvement goal one of identifying and implementing opportunities to employ standards-based grading and grade reporting, select departments and staff. Um, what we would like to do is begin with selecting a department and we have that department. Um, our world language department will be the first department to implement standards-based grading for freshmen next year. Um, so we will make a tremendous effort to speak to our parents at opening house, uh, open house, excuse me, back to school nights, about what they can expect on their report card. Um, Ms. Wilson, who's the department head, has been a very forward thinker on a lot of these topics. Um, as you may know from her presentations, she and her department have been very hard at work aligning their curriculum to nationally recognized standards, that is the basis of the stamp test. Um, so where that felt like a really ideal opportunity to move first is we have those nationally recognized standards and a nationally recognized, uh, assessment that we can use with the stamp test to help align our work. Um, so hopefully what we'd be doing is presenting to parents instead of a typical letter grade or number grade that they're familiar with, is instead of a standards-based report card that might speak to either certain content standards, just bodies of knowledge, uh, but more hopefully reading, writing, speaking, listening, and then a rating that explains how that student is doing. Um, so that will give her and us an opportunity to practice this, the communication, the explanation with parents, um, and also how we program ASP, our grade reporting system, to properly capture that and convey that information. Um, the overall goal is we hope that will be much more informative to students and parents and staff about what their student knows and is able to do in that subject. Um, theory of the case, learning that, we can then expand out from Spanish one this year to Spanish one and two next year, et cetera, keep rolling that through. And in addition to aligning that vertically, that would also give us opportunities to potentially spread that horizontally to other classes where that seems like an ideal match. Um, so this first next year is just that piece where that one class, that one Spanish one class and that one department will be looking at implementing this. Um, we figured that will give us plenty of work and plenty of opportunities for, uh, community information and education. Any questions on school improvement goal number one? Yep.
Um, looking back, I'm going backwards a little bit, just to last year's improvement plan or this current year's improvement plan. There's a lot of emphasis on grading for equity and a few other approaches. So was this, this goal for, for next year? How did that framework kind of influence this goal?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um, it's hard for me to say, it didn't happen in one step. It happened in several gradual steps. So, um, frankly, our work last fall was kind of deconstructing some of the, uh, understandings we may have inherited from what is, and this is the term that the author of grading for equity emphasized, our inherited grading system. Um, not many of us sat down and said, we're, this is what we're doing and here's why. It's just what we've been given, probably what many of us experienced in the classroom. And then once we kind of satisfactorily understood that what existed wasn't quite what we wanted to do, we started thinking, well, what do we want to do? How do we want to better report that? Um, and so I have to give a lot of credit to South Shore Tech. Um, they were, uh, recipients of a state grant to pilot new ideas around grades and grading. Um, John Scott Beletti and I'm going to get his name on Craig Davis from South Shore Tech came here in March. Um, very grateful to them. They presented, basically gave us shortcuts on their school's two and a half, three-year journey with that on standards-based report cards. Um, so that was very insightful for us, um, to see not just a Massachusetts school, but a Massachusetts school down the street with Abington kids, um, using the standards-based grading and one of their comedic taglines is, no one has been injured by the use of standards-based grading at South Shore Tech. In fact, it's been very illustrative. So that gave us kind of the model of, oh, that's a really interesting opportunity for us to pursue. Not to mention it's more common and what happens in report cards in this district as well outside of the high school. I don't know if that answers your question.
I think so. I was, um, also just with, so, but grading, like the, the text grading for equity is very much behind this practice, would you say?
Yeah, it's a really, um, useful compendium of a lot of research pulled from a lot of different sources that helps, uh, walk each reader through kind of the gradual steps into the why behind, uh, making changes, uh, to grading systems.
Mr. Born, quick one. So maybe I'm just not equating it. How does the standards-based grading, like how does that translate to something like we're talking high school, we're talking like class rank as we had, um, Benjamin here, like in honor roll, like how does that translate into those terms or am I just not seeing it?
Yeah. So, uh, what South Shore Tech does, and of course, we are also allowed to do however we want, um, they basically have conversion charts where they take each rating or each performance rating and attach it to a different 4.0 scale. Um, so that way, th- this is what most colleges do. They really are fairly are different as to how each school does its own GPA. They recalculate every school's GPA according to their own needs.
Okay.
So as long as we have something approaching or look at, or a conversion chart that says this is what, this would be in a GPA scale, um, they were able to take and run from that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, if I can move on to school improvement, uh, goal number two, that would be to define and explore the concept of rigor, relevance and depth of knowledge related to curriculum and instruction and assessment with the Abington High School learning community. Um, for those who have been here for a few years may recall me speaking about high-quality performance assessments, uh, in previous school improvement plans. Uh, those in fact did not go away, um, but I think what we had to do was backburner those to better understand how we can appropriately assess those high-quality performance assessments, which opened the door for our conversations about grade and grading. Um, with that, we are back to looking at what we are asking students to do on the regular. Um, not just what we teach them, um, not just, uh, you know, how we instruct them, but how we assess them. Um, and we want those tasks to be meaningful. We want them to be deep, uh, have depth. Um, and we want them to be, uh, you know, rigorous. We don't want them to be easy. We want them to be appropriately challenging for each student. Um, we also know, I know everyone brings their own definition to, of rigor to the table. Um, so this hopes, at least for a high school professional learning community, that we could define that together, understand what that means together. Um, and through that exploration, I'd like to eventually be sharing that, inviting the community through the school council and school committee as well, uh, to joining us in a conversation, understanding of what rigor, uh, relevance, depth of knowledge means to us at the high school and how we can convert those ideas and notions into our regular practice here. practice here. So those things, in my mind, fold in neatly, however, just to say, let's make work more rigorous, see you later, it creates way too many opportunities for autonomy and misunderstanding as to what that means. So that goal would be to explore that topic as a school.
Any questions for Mr. Born? Thank you, by the way.
If I could add just one comment, and I think that this goes without saying, and you know I'm a big fan of rigor, but I like that you have the word relevance in here because although we want to see rigor in certain areas, there's still, the vision of the graduate, there are still areas that are relevant that are outside of academic rigor, so I want to make sure that everyone understands that, not just, I think, you and your team understand it, but that the community understands that this isn't just about giving more tests and more homework, and maybe that's not at all what it's about, but it, we are still including the whole vision of the graduate that we've been talking about for years, where the student that we see leaving this building is not just someone who can score an A on an AP math test, it's a student who's going to be a great citizen.
Yeah, very, and I think it's a key point, and we've had a brief discussion about this rigor, is not volume or rigidity, it is very much, you know, a fully kind of a worthwhile, hopefully intellectual academic, in many cases, social community endeavor, so that's what we're looking to explore.
Great, look forward to it.
Thank you. I think that was a great point, Melanie, thank you for making that for everybody here, including myself. So I appreciate, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Born? Mr. Born, thank you very much for taking the time to present here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Ms. Thompson for the Beaverbrook Elementary School Improvement Plan.
Thank you. I have two documents to present tonight. One is the Beaverbrook School Improvement Plan for 25-26, and the other is the Elementary Handbook, which covers AEP, Beaverbrook, and Woodsdale. You all have in your packet our proposed school improvement plan for 25-26 with our summary of 24-25 goals. Do you have any questions on those? I didn't mean to give you homework.
That's right, no, no, if anybody has any, as we go along, feel free to go backwards to it.
Okay, so moving on to the 25-26 School Improvement Plan, we have three goals at Beaverbrook. Our first goal is to maximize student literacy experiences. We will convene a curriculum review team for the purpose of researching high-quality literacy curriculum for implementation K to 5. We have a call for some more streamlined curriculum. Right now, we're using Peggerty phonemic awareness in K in 1, Project Read in 1 and 2 for phonics, and very loose Readers' Workshop, small group independent reading, K to 2. So we're looking for some continuity, K to 5, but also some rigorous and relevant high-quality literacy curriculum. So we'll be working on that next year with a team of teachers and administrators, K to 5, and I'm looking forward to that work. Any questions on that? Our second goal is to support social development and early teamwork skills. We will provide more opportunities for K to 2 students to work together between grade spans on hands-on engaging learning projects that encourage cooperation, communication, and shared problem solving. We currently have, a lot of our classrooms have buddies with a different grade level classroom, a kindergarten classroom has a buddy classroom in second grade, and they do projects throughout the year, but we really want to celebrate that hands-on learning with these partnerships. And also, we're looking to show, you know, have a night for families to come see these projects or celebrate them in the display case, so that we have students working on STEM projects, on writing projects, on all kinds of things that they can engage with their hands and work with a student from another grade level or students in another classroom, really to work together as a team.
I love that idea of the different grade levels, it's, I mean, it's taking a freshman-senior view and just bringing it down to the Beaverbrook School where the second graders can feel like they're kind of the big ones, but be able to show, take a kindergarten with them and then be able to see it.
And that was one of our School Improvement Plan goals last year, was to increase the buddy system, if you will, so we do have a lot of classrooms that have buddied up with a younger or older classroom, and it's been, it's been really great. And our third goal is to continue to build strong school-family partnerships and ensure families are well-informed and engaged, to streamline communication methods, to make them more consistent, accessible, and aligned across classroom and grade levels. This will be easier as we roll out Thrill Share for all of our teachers and families next year. We've had several of the teachers at Beaverbrook pilot it with their families, and that's gone well, so we're hoping to see some continuity between classrooms, between grade levels, in the amount of communication, what's communicated, still providing autonomy to the teachers, but also parents will know what to expect from year to year. Any questions on that one?
I don't have any questions on that, Ms. Thompson, but can I go back to, just a quick statement question on number two for this year?
Sure.
So about the, so the buddy bench?
Yes.
Right, so the, and it kind of probably just goes where I just was a second ago, too. I think, I love that, I'm going to ask a question at the end of it, so I'll get there, but the idea of it, I think, is amazing, and I think the idea of it at your school in particular, we all know that as kids get older, they can start to form their own groups, and it's not a bad thing either, but sometimes it gets formed and then it doesn't kind of get a chance to get, let anybody else into it. So I think the fact that it, like at the K through 2, where everybody's, I know we have kids that are coming from different preschools, but as they come in to Beaverbrook and they start that, the idea of everybody being able to be around everyone and form their own groups, but also change those groups up as it goes along and be able, if somebody's not feeling like, so my question where I was getting to is, during, with the buddy bench, are you seeing that it's serving the purpose that it's there for, is, are different kids being able to go up there and go with those kids that may need somebody to play with that they don't have in that moment?
They are, but also our lunch recess monitors have been trained to notice a student that might be sitting on a buddy bench and help facilitate that if the students playing nearby are distracted. So we do have students who will go ask someone to play if they're sitting on the buddy bench, but it's been really important for our lunch recess monitors to be part of that as well. We've, all of the classrooms read a story to their classes on the buddy bench. Mrs. Corsioni, our school adjustment counselor, and Ms. Savicki, our assistant principal, made a wonderful video to present to the students about the buddy bench, and it was in rap style, and they were out on the playground, and it was, it was, it was great. So the kids really responded to that, and so the buddy bench was, you know, looked at as, that's just part of our playground.
Great, because, yeah, it's, hopefully they're still at that age where there isn't the he's or she's not my friend, like hopefully that's, like that part of it's not in their brain yet where they can look to develop with everybody, so that's kind of where I was going with that whole general theme.
Any other questions?
Are you noticing with the kindergarten that's come in, that they're coming in kind of with the skill set that may be going back six years ago? Are you, is it settling?
I feel like it's settling. I felt like it was more prevalent last, in the current first grade class when they entered kindergarten, because they didn't have those experiences during COVID of, you know, going to the library for reading or going to, you know, gymnastics class or going to the playground and playing with other students, and there was a lot of screen time during that, during that time, so communication was, communication and problem solving were something that the kindergarten teachers really worked on.
And can I give a shout-out to your kindergarten teachers and your kindergarten students? We just hosted them all, and it was epic.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Thompson? All right, Ms. Thompson, thank you for this, we'll wrap this part up, and I know you have something else for us, so.
Do you want me to present this now?
Yes, please.
The elementary, pre-K through 4, we have updated our handbook, and we're proposing a change in our attendance language in our handbook to more closely align with the attendance practices that are happening at secondary, at middle school and high school. We had a meeting with Dr. Basta and Mrs. Sullivan and Ms. Casey around the attendance language in the handbooks, so we could come to a commonality. And really what changes are made for the elementary is that rather than reporting to families on the fifth or more unexcused absence, we're also going to include the excused absences, because that also aligns with the definition of chronic absenteeism that is provided by D E S I.
Is that the biggest change?
That's the biggest change, yes.
The change really is about increased communication.
Right, currently, we communicate only for excused absences.
Unexcused.
Sorry, unexcused.
Gotcha, yeah.
This is also adding the excused into the thought.
If I may, I feel like when we had conversations at the high school level prior to, I know there's a lot of question marks about, will you say, keep my child at home if they're sick, but if not, and I think at the end of the day, the communication is just that, it's communication, and sometimes a gentle reminder, but also at the state level, they, to them, you not being there, it doesn't matter whether it's excused or not, you not being in a seat, or your child not being in a seat, is your child not being in a seat, and I feel like some of these changes in reporting back to families just is a reflection of what the expectation is at the state level of where, where they want our students to be, so, does that?
Yes, that wraps it up very nicely.
That does make sense to me, and I mean, Dr. Michelle usually put out, it's probably standard now, right, like in the wintertime about, if you have this, it's not what it was three years ago, right? Like you can come in now if you have, like, these kind of things, and I think we kind of discussed it when you were here too, Mr. Born, before. Does anybody have any questions regarding this revision to the handbook? We will have to vote on this.
Oh, just a clarification, this is for both elementaries and the preschool, too?
Pre-K through 4.
The pre-K, they do have an addendum that's not changing as far as their attendance goes, so really, I misspoke, it's mostly K to 4.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions, Ms. Thompson? Or Dr. Boss or Dr. Michelle, I guess, on this one, too. All right, so if we're not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the elementary school handbook attendance policy as presented by Ms. Thompson.
I can make the motion.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are going to skip down now to Dr. Michelle's goals and self-assessment. So Dr. Michelle is going to present her, she's going to just review her goals that we had at the beginning of the school year, she's going to give her self-assessment on, and then I sent all of you an Excel document that is essentially for you to fill out your rating, any comments you do or don't want to put, and then the ask is that, I'm going to say June 9th, it's a Monday, but maybe June 10th if it rolls over, to send your completed form to Ms. Gaylor, and she's going to compile it into one school committee document that we'll present in our June meeting and evaluate Dr. Michelle, and it's, there's four ratings you can give, and essentially, whatever the majority is of the five of us, that's going to be the rating for that one goal for our entire committee. So you can copy me if you want, that's entirely up to you, comment as you want, I asked if you tried to give a rating for each thing anyway, so that was all I just wanted to get before you started. If anybody needs that Excel document again, just let me know, I can resend it to you, so, all right? Thank you, Dr. Michelle.
Thank you. And I'll also add that if you have questions along the way while you are completing that, please feel free to reach out, and I'm happy to talk through some of the areas if there are questions. So I'm going to start with an overview of my goals from September, and you have a document that describes the attainment of the goal or where we are at the goal as of today. I don't want to read that to you because you have that, but I did think it was important to provide an overview of, sorry, I have all these papers and notes, and, an overview of where I think I and the district have, what we've achieved thus far this year. So the first is a student learning goal around student achievement, and this year, we have successfully implemented iReady for grades K to 6. I'd like to thank all of our teachers and parent professionals in K to 6, working through an online assessment for our students, so thank you, thank you to our teachers and staff. We saw significant growth from our fall administration to our winter administration. The spring administration is happening in these weeks right now, and we anticipate we'll also see growth from the winter to the spring. And those results, as you know, were reported back to families, and they're also used to assist in preparing lessons and groupings for our students. MCAS, and we did see growth in some areas, as you remember, we also saw specific subgroups that needed additional support, and our department heads and Dr. Basta are talking about those supports that we anticipate putting into place. I'm not going to mince words when I say, no one in the state of Massachusetts has any idea what our MCAS results will look like in the fall with MCAS no longer being a graduation requirement, so we're all anxiously holding our breath to see our student achievement in MCAS, so that's just the reality of where we are today. In terms of professional practice goal, we continued our practice of learning walks by the administrative team, and that's the administrative team, 13 of us, visiting a school, visiting multiple classrooms within each school, and then discussing what we saw. We then put together what's called a learning walk memo, that is a reflection and questions and thought-provoking ideas that are things that we saw that are sent back to the faculty and staff and are used as a basis for discussion around teaching and learning within each building. Those have been, we've tried very hard to do two for each school, and a lot of things get in the way, but we have made a commitment as an administrative team, as many of us can, to walk through the buildings and see the good work that's happening in our classrooms. We also, this year, spent some time as an administrative team looking at the Department of Education's educator rubric and really talking about what the ratings mean and what evidence, while observing classrooms and evidence of what's collected, to calibrate where we are, to make, we have, you know, many administrative principals, assistant principals, assistant superintendents, directors, department heads doing observations and making sure that we are, we're calibrated, that we're talking about what we see and what that, what that means. And calibrating the observation process is a very, very difficult endeavor, but it's something that we'll continue to have conversations about. People see different things, they, you know, when they're in a classroom, you know, what is, what's really good, what's just okay, and so we're going to continue those conversations moving forward, I think that's a really important exercise for us. I participated, which I call, in the NISIP program, New Superintendent Induction Program, I call it superintendent's school, and so monthly, I meet with a coach, my superintendent coach, and every month, I also attend a meeting of all the new superintendents and all of our coaches, and they're both in person and online, and that's been a really nice experience to be with other new superintendents and talking about leadership and leadership goals and leadership teams, and it's been, it's been very beneficial. And lastly, I just want to touch on communication, and we've heard it in some of our school improvement plans tonight, with the rollout of our Thrill Share platform at the beginning of the school year, it has, I think, the rollout has been very successful, and we've been able to successfully use Thrill Share, both as a means of communicating in non-emergencies and also communicating in emergency situations through text, mostly. I also always want to say, when we talk about texting during emergencies, and I've said this in previous meetings, we will get out information as soon as it's safe for us to do so, and safe, our first priority is our students and our faculty and staff, and our second priority is to get information to families. So I always just want to say that because timing isn't always what people would like, but our priority needs to be our children and students, I, and staff. So that's an overview of my goals from the fall, I don't know if, I know I kind of went quickly on that, but I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Can you just, can you explain?
Oh, is that the tiers? I was going to ask that, too, and because I don't have access to iReady scores either, so I would love if I could get my hands on a copy of...
You just have to pick one of them, like, just understand what they mean.
I'm going to ask Dr. Basta to explain that detail.
Gotcha. So the question is about the performance that Dr. Michelle was comparing our fall performance, our students, to our winter performance. Their, the performance of students, they're grouped by tier, tier 1, tier 2, tier 3, with a percentage of students who landed on each tier. Tier 1, students who require the least amount of intervention. It's the same model as our MTSS model for providing support to students, so tier 1 is everyone. So tier one is everyone, it's where you want people to be, general instruction. Tier two is providing, um, maybe a little bit more individualized, small group instruction and support. And tier three are, uh, students who need more intensive support.
That's perfect where I was looking for.
So you wanna see the, uh, as far as comparing fall to winter, you wanna see the number of, the percentage of students who are in tier three going down and the percentage of students in tier one going up.
So I was reading as, why did tier one kids do better fall to winter, but why did tier two kids not do good from fall to winter? So.
You thought they were in the same.
Correct, so thank you for clarifying that.
Uh, I think, Heidi, you just asked for a copy of an iReady, um, assessment that goes to families, is that?
If that's possible.
Yep, we can, yeah, we can redact a report and send, we'll send a copy to the whole committee.
Just to be able to see, and, and, so curiosity here, um, that tier one, that eighteen percent to a forty-nine percent jump. Uh, how much of that is people using, or I would say, kids coming in having that growth in maturity, um, particularly at the youngest elementary level versus teachers being able to see real-time data and use that to have more informed instruction? And/or parents getting real-time reporting and being able to better support their child at home? What is the?
Uh, if I was a betting man, I wouldn't make a bet on an answer to that question. Um, I, I think you can follow up with whatever you were going to say, but this is the first year that we've implemented it, so there's definitely a learning curve for all of our staff, K to twelve, uh, K to six, on how to administer it. And then also for families on how to interpret the report that they get, even though it's, it's pretty, um, self-explanatory and we have some resources for families. Um, I believe, and I think Mrs. Thompson could share her experiences, I do believe staff and students were more comfortable in, at the winter administration than they were in the fall, because that was brand-new for everyone.
I was, and I was gonna say the exact same thing. Whenever you start a new process, especially a new assessment, there's an implementation dip, both by, uh, students who've never seen this before and it's online and how do I do it, and it's kindergarten, you know, and then into the winter. I think next year, except for kindergarten in first grade, probably, we'll see, um, probably more accurate, uh, fall, um, assessments.
And when, sorry, would we have access to the third round by the next meeting? To the percentages?
When's our next meeting?
June seventh.
Yes.
Well, sure, I'll bring, you can bring that.
I do think, if I, if I could just add, though, that the fifth, sixth grade students have taken plenty of online assessments. They're familiar with this, so the growth in that oldest group of students is probably more of an indication of growth and development and learning as opposed to testing, maybe, you know, at the Beaverbrook level, you have students coming in from a lot of different backgrounds, so maybe that.
Especially K.
Especially K, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you see eighteen to forty-nine percent.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe there's more there, but I would say at the middle school level, those kids have taken so many different types of stuff, even just iX.
I agree with you. The only counterpoint, I would say, is for the spring administration, it's sort of the opposite for our fifth, third, fourth, and fifth grade students and sixth grade students, testing fatigue, because they've had MCAS.
Good point.
Right, so we don't know, uh, winter might be our most accurate for those students.
Yep.
But I agree with you.
But do we use the third round of testing to perhaps do, like, recommendations for summertime for, or are we planning to potentially use that data? Like, you know, here's some areas that you might want to focus on for the summer? Or is that just, let me stop talking now and I'll pretend that never came out of my mouth?
No, no, no. Do you wanna talk at all about what the spring administration might be used for? I mean, I have my ideas, but you're living it.
Ms. Thompson, if you do, can I ask you to go to the podium? Thank you. You can blame him later for that.
Um, after the spring administration, we'll post the, um, parent reports. And the parent reports have a lot of information, um, for families and also a link to, um, you know, different types of readings or books that their, their students can, can read at the level that they, um, test at. Uh, the same thing for math, math is very detailed. The report's very detailed for families, so they can see which area, whether it's, um, numbers and counting or, uh, word problems that the student needs help in. Um, and it provides a pretty detailed paragraph for families to be able to get more information, to see how they might be able to help their, their student at home.
And how would staff be using it?
Sorry?
How would our staff be using the spring assessment?
Well, we're using the spring assessment to really look at how it, um, the interventions impacted those students that did receive interventions uh, based on that data, as well as the, um, when or what I need groupings that teachers, um, uh, grouped based on the data over the year. So it's really kind of a wrap-up, because, um, we do our fall testing the first couple of weeks of, of school.
So, sorry, we lied when we told you we had no more questions, but thank you for coming back.
And thanks for staying.
I, I had one more.
Sure.
Um, will student, well, yes, sorry. Will teachers next year have access to a student's scores from this year?
I, no, because those, um, the students will automatically roll into the classes for next year's teacher.
Okay.
Uh, I would be able to likely access it if it was in Beaverbrook.
Like, if the teacher wanted to know, like, what a student's kind of level was?
How, how they were, you mean?
Right.
In the previous year?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not sure about that.
I think because we haven't gone through it yet.
Yeah.
We don't know, but we've been told that one of the benefits of doing it from K to six is that we have that timeline, that we can see how students have done.
Okay.
And we're not sure whether it's at the building principal level. She has, uh, Dr., Mrs. Thompson has to print a report for each teacher, maybe? Or does the teacher have access to see what the student did the year before? So we'll be able to get back to you on that one.
That's true.
I'm laughing, 'cause my teacher age is showing. I just assumed they all went in the cumulative file and I was having a cold sweat, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my second area of, um.
That's right, we were talking about you, weren't we?
It's a team.
It's a team.
It really is. So my second, uh, document that I provided for you is a self-assessment uh, using the four standards that, um, are identified by the Department of Educate, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Superintendent Rubric um, around instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And that, um, matches up with the spreadsheet that, uh, Chris referenced here. So, um, in each of the four standards, uh, like I said, I've done a self-assessment and I've also identified evidence. Um, and it's, the first, uh, standard is instructional leadership. And, um, I believe that, um, I fostered a shared vision of high-quality teaching and learning across the district. And, um, I'm not gonna, actually, I don't think I want to, I can read all of this, too, but you do have it, um, within, uh, your packet. I, I don't wanna bore you, if you will. Um, I have, um, I've highlighted a few areas, um, in management and operation. I showed a safe and efficient and effective learning environment for all students and work to develop a budget that supports student learning. Um, family engagement, I've actually, um, actively engaged families and community members and support of student learning. And professional culture, nurture, um, I've worked to nurture and sustain a district-wide culture of reflect, reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. And in each of the four standards, I have, um, provided a rating of proficient for each of the four standards and an overall rating of proficient. And, um, I'm available to talk to anyone about both, uh, the report on my goals and my self-assessment, um, whenever and however you'd like to reach out.
Yes, I would say we have to, so part of this is we have to evaluate Dr. Michelle or any superintendent in open session, so that's why we're doing this right now and that's why we'll be doing it next time. But that doesn't preclude you from reaching out to her to ask her questions as you're doing your own evaluation and want to clarify anything there. If it's easier to do it that way than asking a bunch of questions right now. So as you're going through it, um, she'll be available to answer anything, I'm sure, so.
I will.
That was all. Dr. Michelle, thank you for going through that.
Which date did you, I just wanna, did you want that back?
I asked for June 9th, June 9th, I said maybe June 10th.
Which is a Monday.
Two weeks from today, June 9th is a Monday, so.
You said that's right.
Yeah, ninth or 10th, that timeframe, and then, um, 'cause we'll have to have it compiled for.
The packet.
The packet, okay. So that's why I'm giving the date ahead of time, so.
Yep, great.
Also, just, this is off-topic, so just moving on, but not to the next thing. So our next school committee meeting date is Tuesday, June 17th at 6:30 PM here. It'll be the last one of the school year scheduled. I don't know if anything will happen over the summer, but nothing's scheduled as of now. Um, for the committee, if you haven't yet, if you can get, try to get me your choices or whatever for the subcommittees. Um, Danielle, at the same time, I'll try to consolidate that to you, get it to you, so you can have a printed page for the packet as well, all right? So around the same timeframe, that'll be easier for me to put together, so whatever, if that's the next day, I can put something together quick when I meet with Dr. Michelle on the agenda. Up next, dates to remember, um, it's pretty much this week. So Heidi, remember these dates?
I'll have time.
Tomorrow, senior athletic awards night in the cafeteria at 6:30 PM. Thursday, senior awards night in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. Friday is the senior stroll at 10:00 AM, senior picnic at Riley Field at 11:00 AM, and, weather permitting, the drive around the building that was delayed from last Thursday will also take place that day. Saturday, May 31st, graduation on the Abington High School front lawn, uh, 10:00 AM. Um, for those, so there is a rain location, it is the auditorium. We hope we don't have to worry about that, but just so everybody is aware. Um, and then as, so the last day of school is Thursday, June 12th, um, a half-day for students. I believe there's a.
There's a half-day this week, too.
Thursday, May 29th is a half-day, correct? All right, Thursday, the day of the senior, so this Thursday is also a half-day. Oh, yes, um, so Thursday, June 5th is the, um, English Language Family Night that, um, Mr. Prey mentioned. I, I'm gonna guess 6:30 or 7:00 in, like, the seminar room in the cafeteria, but if he probably constant contact, then I'll come out anyway for that, so.
I believe it just did.
All right, um, does anybody else have anything to add?
Um, can I give a shout out? So Thursday, May 29th, we have our last senior, um, half-day hangout. We have another group of students going to hang out at the Senior Center uh, for an end-of-the-year, um, fun shenanigans. So I do want to give a shout out to, um, Sadie Hernandez and Ally Coolsey for being point people at the high school, who have done a tremendous job at, um, creating and kind of maintaining this group. And, um, also a big shout out to Amy Barrett and the crew over at the Senior Center for allowing the collaboration, because that has been a fabulous thing that's come together this year.
That's great.
Um, so that's wonderful. Um, and I also do want to say, student volunteers are looking for help for, um, Abington celebrates. If people are looking for opportunities to lend hands.
Which is the weekend of, like, the 7th, right? That weekend, give or take? I always get my dates wrong, but that's, that weekend. Um, perfect, so the one, there was one thing I, I glossed over, just because I knew it was, so, Anna was gonna present tonight, but she's not feeling well? So she's actually going to come to the June meeting, um, that's the plan right now, and give the student presentation then. I apology, I apologize, I knew it, so I just kind of skipped over as we got there. Um, so if we're good, by roll-call vote, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for the purpose of conducting strategy session for negotiations with the Abington Education Association, units A and B, and non-union personnel, since, as declared by the chair, to hold this discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and not to return to regular session. So we'll adjourn from executive session. I'll be a yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everybody, have a very good night.
Thank you.